Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this note and this workshop for the City of Waterbury's Department of Education. For Ju- July 2nd, not 2020. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom. We have two public speakers for tonight, but we'll first start off with a silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you want to lead us in that? Let me unmute you.
Absolutely. I do not have any specifics to be able to address this in terms of our employees or communities, but I do want to say a prayer for all of our students, our staff, our board, our community, as we work together to make certain that we always make the best decision on behalf of students and that we continue to see outstanding results in terms of the decrease in COVID-19 cases in Connecticut and specifically in the City of Waterbury.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Melissa Serrano Adorno, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Carrie, would you take a role attendance, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Orso?
Yeah.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yeah.
Commissioner Stango?
The record shows that he's here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone? Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Present.
President Pagano?
Present. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is public speaking, and I believe we have two callers that called in.
Yes, our first public speaker.
Say again? I didn't quite hear that. I didn't quite hear that.
Our first public speaker is Carrie Baker.
Hello, the floor is yours.
Hello, Carrie Baker, June 7, 5, Peachtree Road, Waterbury. Commissioners, I'm speaking out tonight out of concern for Wendell Cross. I was informed that Laura Elias was being transferred as principal of Wendell Cross in the 2019-2020 school year. The students of Wendell Cross suffered lots of change. First, they were moved to 29 John Street while the Wendell Cross project was taking place. In September, Joe Amato left Wendell Cross, and it took two months for Ms. Elias to be transferred in. This left Casey Sullivan in charge of the school as teaching vice principal for one month, along with her entire caseload of special needs students, until a special education teacher was sent over to relieve some of the burden for the month of October. Next, in March, COVID-19 hit, and students were charged with distance learning. This left little consistency among the staff and students at Wendell Cross. Once Ms. Elias was there, the attendance went up due to incentives that were offered and student successes were celebrated. Ms. Elias made connections with the faculty and students even with all the disruptions that they were facing. As a community member on the Wendell Cross Building Committee, I'm also concerned with the construction process. The building is not go- the building is not going to stop during the summer, or rather move ahead full force, and I'm worried that there will be nobody in the principal's role over the summer to make project decisions and move the project forward. I know Ms. Elias was also in the process of helping pick out furniture and make plans for the physical space, and with her transfer, I worry the project will suffer and potentially fall behind. In conclusion, having a new principal come to Wendell Cross for the fall will be one more major disruption for students when that is all they have faced in the 2019-20 school year. This would mean that a third principal would have to be brought up to date on the building project, and I fear major details could be missed having a third principal become a breast of this project. For the sake of the students and for the Wendell Cross project, I ask that this transfer not be made so that students and faculty may come back to a bit of normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Our next speaker is Debbie Shatzel.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. Apologies. Debbie Shatzel, 306 Peachtree Road, Waterbury. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners, Court of the Board, Superintendent, and Administration and staff that are present. I also have serious concerns about consistency for the students at Wendell Cross. I currently serve as the Vice President of the Wendell Cross PTA, and instead of the entire neighborhood calling, and I'd really like to tell you some of the changes that have happened at Wendell Cross and some of the things that our new neighborhood school has endured without too much pushback and fight. When, when the school was told that we were going to move all the way over to Brooklyn, there were many, many concerns. We discussed them, but then ultimately accepted the choice of the Superintendent and the Mayor. We understood the changes that needed to be made and decided to get completely behind the project. Changes were made at on John Street to the old St. Joseph's School. Staff worked tremendously hard over last summer to get that school welcoming and ready. We will always be thankful for that, and our students felt settled in. So I mean, either a principal needed that they, many of them had known for years. Needed to take family medical leave. We understood that. But it took, it took the process a while to be able to grant the students more steady leadership and not have people pulled in every different direction. All staff members stepped up. But when Ms. Elias was sent to the school, she immediately embraced the new role. She changed the Student of the Month and made everything a celebration. She included incentives for PVIS. She got everybody into square one art so that we could make tiles for a wall. Every child would have a little tile on the wall of the new school. She got involved in furniture. She got involved in neighborhoods. She showed up at every PTI meeting, every coffee hour. And everything that's happened this spring is painful for everyone, and we know that. But we implore the Board of Education and the Administration of Waterbury Public Schools to reverse their decision and please allow this principal that has embraced our children wholeheartedly to continue on the path that she was setting for them. There was an entire passport around the world plan that would have happened this spring, and we're hoping, we were hoping that this will happen this fall, where our principals stepped up and every, every classroom was assigned a country and they started to run history. There were songs from each of those countries being taught in music, games from each of those countries being taught in phys ed. Everything was moving forward, and to put an immediate stop to all of that for another administration change, I believe would be very, very difficult for our students. And we ask that the person who stepped forward and was embracing our children, embracing this project, embracing the neighborhood, be allowed to continue on that path while the new school is built and opened. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. I believe there's no more callers, Carrie?
No, that's all that signed up.
Okay, thank you. I've been notified that Juanita Hernandez is trying to connect in, and for the record, Commissioner Jason Van Stone has joined us, and I'm not as sure exactly where he's at, but it looks like he's either at Mohegan Sun or on a set from Star Trek: Gang's Generation.
I'm in the TARDIS.
All right. Our first order of business is number one committee on finance requesting approval of professional services agreement. Mike Marotti, you have the floor.
And a theme song, apparently.
Sounds like Joe Pass playing.
I thought it was his walk-off music.
I believe we're having some technical issues with that.
I'm shocked.
Okay, well, it's actually, it's actually it's actually me, and I was just waiting for the, my intro music to finish, apparently. So, good evening, Board of Education, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey. Tonight, we put in front of you a, a contract for an educator's rising on my curriculum for students to be able to learn, not just to become a teacher, but also to have credentialing so that when they leave the Waterbury Public Schools, they have a strong resume for a college application. It is a curriculum that is by semester, it's four semesters that build upon itself. We were able to be, to, to show the curriculum committee this in more depth last night, and we are using Perkins, Perkins Five to be able to purchase this curriculum.
Any questions for Darren? I'm assuming you're done, Darren, right?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments for Darren? Commissioner Brown?
Hi, good evening. Yes, I had the pleasure of looking at the presentation last night. It was very impressive. I just had a question. How many credits will students be getting for this course, and is this considered an elective?
So this, this would be, this would be an elective, but it's, it's too, it's too, you'll be, by the time they finish all four semester courses, the students would receive two credits, two full credits.
And the second question I had was, is it possible to explore them getting college credit for taking this course in, in kind of a dual system that we do with other coursework, or is this not really appropriate for that?
Um, we would have to check if Course Three and Four, the, not, I would, I would, I would probably believe that most, most colleges wouldn't accept the first two courses, but we could check to see if Course Three and Four have, 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 have any alignment to, to another college for that dual enrollment. We can certainly look into that. It, it would be probably a stretch, to be honest, Commissioner, but, but it's not something that isn't worth asking a question for, for sure. Because that would be great for them to, anytime we can get dual enrollment and offer that for students is always a plus, for sure.
And my last question is pertaining to number of students. Is it unlimited, or is there a limit to the number of students?
This is actually a great question, Commissioner. I was wondering if that would come up last night. So, and I, and I, I don't want to paraphrase the Superintendent, but I, you know, students vote with their feet on the courses that, that, that we want to fill, and so we certainly, it, we would certainly embrace as many students that could possibly come into this, into this as, as possible, and obviously that comes down to some of the things we talked about last night, which is making sure students are aware of the course, making sure counselors are equipped to be able to talk to the students prior to selecting courses so that they know what pathway is to be able to take. And so, you know, that, all of that from last night played in together, including that some of the other programs you saw last night, and so, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. It's exciting.
Let the record show Commissioner Juanita Hernandez is joining us. Welcome, Juanita. Good to see you. Any other questions for Darren Schwartz? I don't see anybody raising their hands, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which I believe, Darren, you're taking also?
Yes, so tonight, in, in the next two are, are funded through Title IV. Again, we have put together, I think, a wonderful opportunity for students to take precision exams and U-Scienc career aptitude test. One, we're looking to be able to provide students with a career aptitude assessment that will be able to provide students through a series of questions, some, some guidance into what careers that they seem to be interested, they could be interested in based on not only their skill, but also their interest, open up the world and flatten it out for them, and so that they're not just looking at careers that are immediately close to them or the only careers that they've only heard of through family and/or through school. And so, career aptitude will help flatten that, that world of opportunity for the students, and, and then precision exams, which is, which is really cool. It's going to be able to provide us in all of our CTE courses, credentialing, industry-recognized credentialing for students so that when they finish a course, of course, such as culinary, students would be able to take a industry-recognized exam at the end of that to prove that they have the skills that, that, that employers are looking for, so that not only, not only are they employable, but they also will build their college resume entering after, after 12th grade. And so, we're really looking forward to being able to provide this for students through Title IV.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions or comments for Darren? Wave your hand. No one has, oh, wait, Commissioner Brown?
I thought I'd give other people a chance to ask questions. I'm very excited again about this. These initiatives are really outstanding. In terms of the content, has, has this program been used in urban areas? Is it culturally competent?
Yes, it's a, it's a great question. I actually, based on conversation last night at the board, we're still pulling that together based on the feedback that we had so that we can, we can show you exactly how it interplays in, in different videos of several different students that are engaging in it. We have that. We're putting it together for, for everybody. But I actually asked Mike this morning about you, about U-Scienc and precision exams specifically, to be, even though that wasn't a specific request, I did it based on, on the conversation last night, and we pulled together, and I can include those, some of those as well, if the board is interested for some videos. For, for example, I just looked at one, maybe 20 minutes ago, of, 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 of a, of a, of a black student in Atlanta talking about U-Scienc and about the credentialing, and so, absolutely, these are used across the nation with all different types of, of, of communities that look sometimes like Waterbury, and sometimes they, they have a high concentration of a specific group of students, but absolutely used across the country.
And my second question is, how is this linked to student success plans? I know in the strategic plan that was highlighted as one of the first goals to really have a, have a very, very robust student success plan for every student. So how, how do you see this interfacing?
So Mike, Mike kind of breezed over it a little bit last night, and, and so, part of the key of the student success plan is being able to have that end goal in mind, or at least having a vision for where you want to go, and it's really hard to do without something like the aptitude in, in, in the test, and it's also hard, having the, the credentialing also provides students a sense of accomplishment, not just by getting a grade, because a grade can mean different things for different people, but a credential is a credential, and it's credentialing nationwide. And so, I just, you know, I see this as not just a motivator, but also it really lays out a path for a student that we haven't been able to really establish in the past. And so, I think, I think specifically the aptitude test for student success plans is going to be a key for students to be able to have conversations with counselors about where they're going, and it's been, it's been a sorely missing link here in Waterbury.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Any other questions for him? Thank you very much, and the next one is yours, Darren, also, correct?
Okay, I like it right off the bat. So, third one, we also talked at the curriculum committee last night, and this is about the virtual shadow, job shadowing, and I, I think this was also well-received from the, from the curriculum committee, and it's really about being able to provide students virtual job shadowing, and it's, again, I'm going to use the idea about flattening the world for students, and, and, you know, regardless of transportation issues, regardless of what school you go to, regardless of, of, of some barriers that get in the way, regardless of what is immediate here in Waterbury, we are able to provide through the virtual job shadowing students the opportunity to do a virtual job shadow and a job shadow of a career they may not have known existed, and so if you link, if you think about the last piece of the aptitude test, and then you think of the virtual job shadowing, you really want to try to match those up, right? And so if you're having, if you're, say, a student somehow comes out marine biologist, somehow of interest, I don't know what a marine biologist is, well, we, I don't know how many we have here in Waterbury and how many are ready to, to job shadow, so let's go into our virtual job shadowing as we, as we, as we, as we maybe take a, a few courses that might be close to this in CTE that might not exactly get to marine biology, but it will provide a student with the opportunity to at least go see what a marine biologist does and, 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 and watch what they do on a, on a, on a consistent basis through video so that they have a true understanding of what the job would entail, and, and now it sets that vision for them so that they, they can see themselves in that position, they can see what it takes to do that position, and I think that, again, that flattening of the world and breaking down barriers and making it more equitable for students is really the driver here for this.
And I also just wanted to note, Darren's really said it well, that we're looking to make this program, both these platforms available for any student and any student across the school district in grades six through 12. So, you know, that's not just CTE students, it's all students in those grades. So, there will be different timelines and milestones that when students enter into a certain grade, they should be taking this Profire test, you know, talking about student success plan implementation, like they're definitely on the board for that, and U-Scienc is almost the starting point for career pathway and bedding into career pathways, and then the job shadowing, the credentialing, or almost this is capstone part of ending the pathway before they graduate and along the way through the, the program of study, so it kind of just is a wraparound program for the start to finish for, for students.
Thank you, Michael. Darren, you all wrapped up?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for either Michael or Darren? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Who do you see being responsible for, you know, monitoring the job shadowing? Is that a guidance counselor? Who, who does that?
Yes, Commissioner, I think, so, again, who's closest to students really can make the biggest difference, and so, it would, it would certainly be at the school level, and a counselor would be the best, best, best person to be able to watch how the students progressing through, not just the SSP, but also the, the job shadowing. But I also think in, in some cases, there, there, there's going to be a strong connection to coursework in some, in some of these job shadowing, and so, it's not just a counselor's responsibility, it's a collective accountability of, of a counselor and maybe a specific teacher, and at some level, I think some, some support from Central Office in that overseeing that program is, is, is something that you'll also see in the, in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question or comment for Darren or Michael before we move on to the next agenda item? Seeing no one waving their hand, thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move on to the next one, which is item number four. Requesting approval of professional services agreement with CREC. Kathy Gabrielson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Superintendent Ruffin, and Administration. Before you is the result of an arduous RFP process that we began back in February and resulted in a recommendation by our committee to Purchasing for a Contract to Be Formed with CREC, which is the Capital Region Educational Council. It's one of our six regional education service centers in Connecticut. It is a three-year contract that is totaling in the amount of $1,404,000, and it is to provide up to five school psychologists for the three-year period. This was a blind process. We did not have any knowledge of what their rates would be while we were undergoing the interview process and, and the rating of the interviews and applications. Once we were made aware of their fees, we did enter and we recommended into purcha- to purchasing that we undergo a negotiation with CREC because we weren't real comfortable with their, their their fees and their desire to give us a credit and which would then sub lower the hourly rate if we reached 4,200 professional hours of service, and we negotiated them to give us the lower rate right from the very beginning, so that there will be no credit, but we get the lower hourly rate. So it is with all of that information that I put this to you and ask that you consider approving this at the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Who did the negotiation? You?
I participated in it along with Elaine Skronski and Amy Lopez from Purchasing.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for Kathy? No one's waving? Oh, wait, Liz?
Hi, hi Kathy.
Hi, Liz.
I was wondering what exactly the psychologist, are they going to be assigned to special ed or are they available for other duties?
Their primary, their primary responsibility is to execute services in the IEPs, including conducting evaluations and providing counseling if they're in a school with a counseling caseload assigned to them. As is, as are all staff in our mental health venue, arena, they are available to any student who is in crisis or needs to check in with somebody to, to evaluate or, you know, look at their current crisis situation and which point they would be able to step up, just like a school counselor, a direct-employed school psychologist, school social worker.
Great. And the other question I had was, does this bring, what is our capacity now with school psychologists? Has, is this an increase? Are we even?
No, this is even, this is even with our last contract that just expired on June 30th and, and with our current population of directly hired school psychologists. This is not an increase.
Okay. Do you, do you think this is enough? Do we need enough? Is this enough?
I'm still, I'm still evaluating, I'm still evaluating that.
Because I would imagine that given, we're hearing and listening to so many webinars about the trauma that our kids are going through and so forth, so I'm just, I'm just hoping that we are planning for, you know, the capacity to really work with our students and teachers to, to really make, make the transition back to school, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm still evaluating that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Anybody else have a comment? Hearing no one waving their hands, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Kathy, the floor is yours for that one.
Item number
Okay, so this item has quite a number of out-of-district placement contracts associated with it. These did not go out to RFP. These are done through the PPT process where students are placed when we are not able to provide them with appropriate supports and services within the public school system, and so by extension, we are looking at providing our services through the out-of-district placements. So the first one is for Ed Advance. This is a one-year contract for a student
This is a one-year contract for a student who is going to have an extra year of transition. And by extra, I don't mean he's beyond age eligibility for it. He's completed his four years of high school. He's got his credits to graduate, but the PPT determined that he needed additional supports and services in transition. The amount of this contract is $55,000. The placement is with Ed-Advance, however, it takes place on post-university's Waterbury campus. Would you like me to pause for questions after each one, Commissioner Pagano? Or would you like me to just go through all of them?
Go through all of them, and then we'll aggregately look at the questions.
Okay. The next contract is for Specialized Education of Connecticut Incorporated, otherwise known as High Road School of Wallingford and Best Academy at High Road School. This contract is for 13 students. It is a three-year contract. It totals $4,67,416.16. This contract encompasses not just educational supports, but also related services such as counseling, speech and language services, occupational therapy services, physical therapy services, and consultation by said providers with staff and family members. The next contract is with Aces, which is the Area Cooperative Educational Services. It's a RESC, Regional Education Service Center here in Connecticut. This is, and they are located in Hampden, Connecticut and North Haven, Connecticut. This contract encompasses for 26 students at various locations in the Aces' structure. Village School, Aces Mill Road Elementary School, Aces Mill Road Middle School, Whitney North High School, and Aces Academy formerly known as Aces East and West High Schools. This contract totals $6,471,928.71 for a three-year term. And again, includes occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language counseling, in some instances, board-certified behavior analysts and the folks who work under them, as well as consultation with staff and family members. The next contract before you is F. This encompasses four students for a three-year period totaling $809,326.51. We have one student there who has a one-on-one aide. This amount, all of the educational, the one-on-one aide, counseling, and speech and language services as well, as well as consultation with family and staff. The next contract before you is with Ben Haven. This is a three-year contract for two students totaling in the amount of $926,656.51. Students who are placed in Ben Haven have very significant needs. This IEP incorporates all weekly-related services such as counseling, speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, as well as one-on-one supports when needed. This is also a three-year term. And the final contract in item number five is between Waterbury and St. Vincent's Special Need Center. This is a contract that focuses on three students in the total of $1,018,422.22. This is a comprehensive tuition, meaning that all related services are included. Paraprofessionals are included in this amount, and as well as consultation and peripheral nursing services. And by peripheral, I mean not one-on-one nursing, but they have a nursing staff at the school that frequently reviews and liaises with students' medical teams because the students who attend this particular school are also very medically involved. And that's all of the items in number five.
Thank you very much, Kathy. I see hands up. I'll start off with Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Thanks, Kath. Very detailed. Read through them. They seem pretty standard. And looking though too quick, transportation, where required? Is that included in the price or is that in our transportation budget?
That would be in transportation budget. That is not part of the contract because they don't typically provide transportation for their students. Sometimes Aces does. And if so, that would be articulated in the Aces' contract if we were utilizing their services. However, it's my understanding that we are using All-Star and Ambassador for those students at this time.
And is the St. Vincent's, is that 24/7? Or is that a day student situation?
These students, some of them may reside there, but we are only paying for the day treatment program.
Okay.
They have some group homes, just like Adelbrook has group homes. And, but we don't pay for the residential costs. We're only paying for the educational.
Education. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Commissioner Rocco Orso, and then Commissioner Anne Sweeney in that order. Rocco, the floor is yours.
Hi, Kathy. Thank you for the explanation. How you doing?
Very well, you?
None of these contracts went off RFP?
None of these do. These are all made by PPT placement. These are educational placement decisions that are covered under IDEA. And only the PPT can make the determination as to where is the appropriate placement for the student.
Okay, I thought it was IDEA, and then we have to go out there. Very exempt, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Orso, Commissioner Anne Sweeney, the floor is yours.
Kathy, so the services that they're expecting to be offering and that we have contracted for, are they comparable to pre-COVID? Because now we have social distancing, they have to wear masks and all these other things. So are they, have we contracted for what we've contracted for in the past? And are we paying for what we got in the past?
Yes.
And is that going to continue under this contract?
All of these contracts are based on the students' IEPs. And that is, that's what they're based on. So we are paying for the services that are articulated in the IEPs.
Okay, so we don't know how, what kind of arrangements they're going to make when students go back to these locations in terms of social distancing and those kind of things? And do they have the capacity to do that and still deliver a level of service?
Of these schools, Aces right now is actually bringing students back on a cohort-rotating basis, starting on July 8th. They are bringing students, they have a cohort of students who are coming on A-days and doing distance learning on B-days. They have the students who are in cohort B are doing the opposite. So they've got 50% of their students at home on one day, and then the next day they're coming in and they switch vice versa alternatively every day. Of the other schools that are in this particular group, I'm not aware of any of them doing in-person ESY services for the summer. I think many of them are working on their reopening plans and how they are going to provide services as we move forward through reopening in this COVID time.
So do we plan on monitoring what they're delivering?
Absolutely.
Okay, given the circumstances, I think, you know, it makes sense to make sure we have some eyes in those facilities.
These are our most vulnerable students. And that means that they have to be monitored very, very closely. And I have actually been in contact personally with the directors of all of these programs, as well as our other out-of-district placement programs over the last month and a half, talking about how they're doing things, what they're doing, getting verification from them on what they're doing and how they're doing things. So I'm in, I won't say daily contact with all of them, but in a week's time, I'm touching base with probably 75 to 90% of these folks.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You can continue with the next agenda item, Kathy. And Commissioner Harvey, if I'm not back in time, can you start the questions?
Okay, this next item is a no-cost item. This is simply a contract with Fairfield University to bring on an intern to work with us for training to become certified in school counseling. I always like to have interns and fieldwork students because it helps us when we're looking for candidates to be able to draw from a pool of folks that we actually have some firsthand knowledge with. So I would encourage the board to consider passing this at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Van Stone? No, Commissioner Orso.
I just want to make a comment. I like those no-cost contracts. Thank you.
I think we all like those best.
Any other questions? I don't see, let me just check. Okay. All right, we're all set.
All right, thank you.
All right, I don't have the agenda in front of me. What is the next item, Carrie?
Our next item are transfers in the budget, Doreen.
All right, thank you, Doreen.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, everybody. I think at the last workshop, I presented a transfer. We also approved the budget. And I said that I would be coming back with other significant transfer that would be going into the sinking fund. And they're coming from the salary line items going down into the sinking fund. A lot of this is from attrition savings and surplus accounts. And some of this is also due to some surplusing that happens in the Alliance Grant. And as you know, last year when we passed our budget, we did not have the Alliance application. We received an increase. So we are able to, we were able to move Wallace teachers, as well as part of the Wallace Academic Academy, over into the Alliance Grant, which surplus what we had in the general fund. So I would like to have the board consider a transfer in the amount of $3,475,627,000 out of salaries and into the plant maintenance sinking fund, which then would be transferred into that fund. We'd expense in the current year in the general fund, but then we would move it to the Board of Education sinking fund. As I had said in previous meetings prior, these funds would be used towards capital improvements. It would be used towards infrastructure, technology. As you know, we get zero allocation, mostly in capital improvements with 32 buildings. The need rises where we need, obviously, these types of funds. So we're trying to, unfortunately, we're having to have to fund that ourselves now. So through attrition and a lot of this too, some of this is through COVID. Obviously, as you know, once COVID happened, the mayor instituted a hiring and a spending freeze. So on some of the non-certified line items that we're taking from, obviously, we weren't able to fill some of our positions. So there were surpluses due to all those vacancies. So I'm going to move $1,675,000 out of the Wallace teachers. You're going to see the special education, school psychologist, social workers, and speech pathologists. Also, our school maintenance and custodians. Obviously, there was a lot of vacancies in that line, which were held due to hiring freeze. Fiscal services is in the school business office. There was a couple vacancies in our department most of the year. Special education, ABA therapists, and then in some of the school clerical line items, totaling $3,475,627,27 to be transferred into the sinking fund and then expensed out and moved over into the actual fund. So I ask your consideration on this transfer. Any questions?
All right, Doreen, hold up for a minute. Commissioner Pagano, I see you back.
I'm back. Thank you very much, Vice President Harvey. Any questions for Doreen? I don't see any hands floating around, so.
I just had one question.
Okay, one?
President, yeah. I had a question about the speech pathologists. Is that because we can't find them? Because I know that's been an ongoing problem.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, so most of those special, most of the certified under special education is, you know, are hard areas to fill. So, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions? All right, I don't see anybody waving their hand. I thank you, Doreen. Have a good evening. All right, our next presenter is Mr. Will Clark. And we are on item number eight on building and small facilities.
Good evening, President Pagano and Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, and our distinguished guests and colleagues. Tonight, just have one permit on there. This is a permit over at Westside for a civil service exam run by the HR Department related to an administrative assistant position. We've worked with the HR Department, who's frankly been leading the charge on many of the COVID-related preparations for some of the city departments and buildings across the city. So they've made preparations for distancing and chosen a space and a room that's very large to accommodate. But this is a position that we need to test for side and the city side in order to fill from. So this is the permit for the use of that facility for the purposes of the civil service test.
Thank you, Will. Any questions for Will or comments? Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Of course, Will. Of course, I have a question. Actually, I just want a clarification. I believe you said Westside permits as Career Academy. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll go with, yeah, maybe I've got the one that's a bit dated. The one I saw was Westside. It may have been revised to be Career after we looked through. So I'll go with what's on the agenda. And maybe that we moved it over based on the preparation and the ability to get in and out of the building easier.
Just, you know, for documentation.
Yeah, and I'll confirm that prior to the board meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Any other questions? No one's waving? Will, you did a spectacular job. Thank you very much. Superintendent Ruffin, you're on the last agenda item, number nine. A discussion on long-term reopening plan.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioners, tonight I will be sharing with all of you the reopening plan options for 2021. Again, this is our very first draft. I'm going to preface that by saying that Waterbury has been working on a potential reopen plan for several weeks. And we have been receiving several documents from many agencies. The State Department, we've received some guidance and press releases from the governor. We've received some from our regional centers. We've received some recommendations and documents from CAPE. We've received them from the superintendent's organizations. And we've received several documents that were prepared by several of the professional organizations that I am a member of, as well as reading literature and research from across the nation on reopening plans. But last week, the state of Connecticut released a statement that schools were going to reopen in Connecticut. And based on the status of COVID-19 and based on the reopen plans that have been successful in the state of Connecticut, there was a desire for us to move forward with planning a reopening of schools for the fall of 2020. And with that, two days later, we received a document entitled Adapt, Advance, Achieve. It's Connecticut's Plan to Learn and Grow Together. It was released by the Connecticut State Department of Education. And that plan specifically applies to a reopening of school systems and how districts may then utilize their team to be able to implement a reopen plan that would be conducive to their school community. So the plans that you're seeing tonight are preliminary. I have no doubt that there will be many changes to this plan. So this is not 100% by any means. And if you will allow me to go through it and then hold for questions at the end, I think you will see how we are going to be seeking input from everyone, including all the Commissioners, as we move forward. As I stated, this plan is a result of all of the different documents and the most recent 50-page document released by the state of Connecticut that allows us to be able to devise plans for Waterbury Public Schools in conjunction with the state guidelines. plans for Waterbury Public Schools in conjunction with the state guidelines while also keeping in mind the health trends, input from teachers, administrators, staff, students, parents, and community stakeholders. We have two plans to present tonight. Plan one is actually in two parts. Plan one, again, all of these plans will be for all students returning to school. And so our Plan One and all of the other plans that will be discussed tonight take into consideration all of these factors for health and safety, as well as for teaching and learning, as well as transportation. And so I'd like to start off by talking about the health and safety first. And I believe that's the third slide. And so the health and safety, these are measures that we are going to take for all schools as we prepare for an opening of school in person. Social distancing, a total review of our schools and our spaces and how we can make social distancing appropriate, keeping in mind that the social distancing that was brought forth several weeks ago, six feet apart, is no longer the standard today. And we are unsure how those social distancing or how social distancing will be defined two months from now, but as they are defined today, it is no longer a six feet apart as it relates to plans that will be implemented possibly in August or September. But we're keeping the social distancing in mind regardless, and we're utilizing and planning under advisement to utilize all of the spaces that we have within Waterbury Public Schools to make certain that we can provide as much social distancing as possible, meaning areas that were non-traditional classroom areas could be considered as we bring more students into the building. We're requiring each student and staff to wear masks while in school or school property or on a bus. We are certainly going to be able to adhere to any exceptions, but we're going to be very clear on what those exceptions can or cannot be. There will be sanitation stations at high-traffic areas of the school, as well as a total cleansing of the school in between, in between class time. Soap and paper towels will be available, and we will keep those in stock. Also, considerations for the nurse or a health aide at each school, and also designating a space in each one of the campuses for a student or staff who exhibits symptoms that are consistent with COVID-19 while they're on the school site. Schedules will be reconfigured to allow time for students to wash their hands prior to eating and frequent washing of their hands, and we'll also be providing guidance for families and staff regarding staying home when they're not feeling well. We keep in mind four other factors, emergency contact information. We recognize that that's critically important to have the most up-to-date information on all of our children and families. We recognize the cleaning protocols that will have to take place, and that will be taking place more frequently than in any traditional school setting or school time. And we're taking that guidance from the Department of Public Health and their guidelines. HVAC systems will be monitored to utilize outside air where possible. And then, of course, visitors will be limited to the school, to the school building. For safety issues and educational issues, we recognize that there's always been a welcoming into school for all of our visitors and families, but we're going to take extra precaution here to make certain that everyone is safe. We'll be paying attention to deliveries and how the deliveries are dropped off at each school, and will have limited access to the building during the day when teachers and students are in-house. In terms of the teaching and learning that will be taking place while students are physically in school, we're going to try as much as possible to emphasize grouping of students by the same class or group or cohorts of students. And one of the reasons why we want to do that is to better know where the students are in terms of moving together from one class to another class in the event that we ever have to determine that someone was ill for proper notification and for isolation or for proper medical and communication purposes. So we're considering things such as grade configuration and methodology. The guidance we received in the document suggests things such as grades five through grades kindergarten through fifth grade or pre-K through eighth schools might best be served if we utilize that cohort model, but we are not certain how that would specifically look for each campus, but that is certainly an option that we have taken into consideration as we roll out Plan One. The students' arrival and departure, the meal, the movements, the schedule throughout the day, all of those things are being taken into consideration to minimize access of groups meeting together and, of course, to allow students to be able to eat perhaps in a classroom so that they do not have to move into the cafeteria, even consideration for using the cafeteria, libraries, and larger spaces to make certain that we have more space between students and teachers while they're physically on campus. Parents will have an opportunity to access teachers by telephone, by email, and virtual meetings on one-to-one. So when parents traditionally would be able to go into the school to have parent-teacher conferences, we are now saying that if everybody goes back to school, we would limit that access. We would still have it available, but we would do it virtually and by telephone and by email. The physical configuration of individual classrooms will be monitored to ensure students are socially distancing, and guidance will be provided for the teachers in regards to best practices. We recognize that prior to returning to the building, there's going to have to be a very clear understanding of what we can and what we cannot do and what constitutes safety and how do we assure that everyone, including anyone who might be delivering anything as a substitute, would very much be aware of what our plans are to assure safety of all of our students and our staff. Recognizing transportation, that we would work very closely with the guidelines that have been provided to us so far, there are no longer restrictions to the number of students that can ride the school bus. But we do recognize the need for protective gear such as face masks, and we would make certain that that is provided, either provided by the district or provided by the transportation company or provided by the parent and the students themselves. We want to make sure that provision is something that's taken care of, and we would make certain of that prior to implementing any of the plans. The district would confirm the protocols relative to cleaning and sanitizing the buses so when students, before students ever get on the bus, that they're totally clean, and when students exit, that there's a cleaning schedule as well. Any bus monitors, bus driver would also have masks and protective gear, and we would make certain that that is already agreed upon before any of the students are transported. We also are aware that we want to offer options for our parents, because some parents may choose to drive their students to school, and we definitely want to ask parents if that would be a chosen option for them. We are aware too that the, we have to consider all of that, including what happens with our crossing guards and the masks that they will need to wear as they're also helping students cross the street. That becomes an integral part of our plan, regardless of which Plan Waterbury will have. The bus routes and the timing may be adjusted. You know, the transportation and ridership would be monitored and then frequently, I might add, because we may have to evaluate and reevaluate and change some things along the way as we determine how many students will be physically on a bus and if that ever increases because of the comfort level that parents have to send their children on the bus instead of driving them, and we will consistently monitor that. All of this is a part of Plan One in-person instruction. Plan One, Option B, is a side-by-side. So both plans allow for everyone to come back. One, totally in-person. The other one, in-person, or you can choose a virtual academy. So it's a side-by-side, meaning that everybody goes back to school, but some may choose a virtual instead of a physically in a school classroom. And so this plan for Plan B is a side-by-side with Plan A. It's not an either, it's not an either-or, but it gives the parent an option of either-or. So parents could opt in to this kindergarten through 12th grade academy. They would be asked to commit to that academy for at least a semester, that is to avoid going in and out of the virtual and back into the school so that we can make certain that staffing is going to be consistent with student enrollment and that what we promised to deliver, we're able to do that because class sizes are at appropriate level for the staff that we have hired. Distance learning would be different than what distance learning has been over the last several weeks, and by that I mean that we continue to learn better and more effective ways to be able to deliver the instructional piece, as well as to have one-on-one communication between parent and student. That was significantly missing at the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis from March, April, and May, but we are also having an opportunity this summer to expand on the distance learning and to continue to learn how to deliver quality instruction via that platform. So considering if we're opening schools for the fall and we're going to offer a virtual academy, that will be significantly different in terms of experience for the teacher and the student and the parent as well. We will have a blend of asynchronous and synchronous learning, and there will be live interaction between the teachers and the students on a regular basis, on a daily basis in 2021 in this virtual academy. Teachers are going to continue to engage in professional learning activities that are going to expand those skills, and I'm very pleased that thus far we've had teachers that have become certified, Google-certified educators, and that's a pretty aggressive process whereby teachers take these courses and they are best prepared to meet the standard that make them experts in the field of delivering instruction. We have this available for the teachers that helped us teach other teachers, as well as teachers across the district, and they opt in to be able to complete this certification training, and many of the teachers have already done this, and we're going to continue this. Regardless of whether we're going to have a virtual academy or not, it's going to be a best practice because we want to make certain that virtual teaching and learning does not go away in Waterbury. Our second plan, this, everything that I've discussed so far is a Plan One, with everybody coming back to school in-person or virtual academy. Plan Two is our next plan, and all students return to school. However, it's a different plan. Option A asks for students to come in for only a half a day. So students come in-person in a school, their select school, for a half-day, and then they return home. During the time that they're home in the afternoons, they will still interact with the same teacher that they had in class in one-to-one, in a personal teaching classroom, but in the afternoons, they would be logging in and communicating with their teachers and receiving assistance virtually. For example, if they were still struggling with the instruction, if they need extra time, if they need extra one-to-one time, this would be something that the teacher that taught them during the school day would have an opportunity to interact with them in the afternoons after they've returned home in a virtual setting. It limits the number of hours that a student is in school. Also, if we're considering this for the fall, then we also consider that many of our school buildings do not have air conditioning, and so this allows for students to attend a half-day in the morning when it's probably the coolest, and then go home in the afternoons and have some interaction via a virtual platform with their teachers in the afternoon. We keep all of the protocols for safety, for teaching and learning and transportation that we discussed previously in place, and we offer after-school programming for our students based on the funding and based on logistics. For instance, what happens if a student and parent want to participate in an after-school program, we would determine the feasibility of offering an after-school program to support the continuous involvement and activities for our students. So that would be an Option A of students being in school in the morning and in virtual in the afternoon. The Option B, which is our last option that we're presenting at this point, Option B is totally virtual. So we can have a group of students that may opt in for Option A, which is half-day in, virtual in the afternoon, but then parents could also choose for Option B, which is a total virtual academy. That means for the same content that teachers are delivering in the morning with a group of students in-person, this group of students in a virtual academy would receive this in the afternoons, and teachers would be there to be able to teach them, but in a total virtual environment. It would be a combination of in-person and also posted assignments, but the difference between that and what was offered in March, April, and May is that this is an interaction with the real teacher in real time to be able to assist students with high-quality teaching and support instructions. Teachers would continue to receive professional development, and they would continue to become certified in the Google-certified, as a Google-certified educator. That's the Option A and B to two plans that brings students back to school, brings our teacher and staff back to school, but brings them in with some options. And what I'd like to add to these, although they are simply drafts right now, what I'd like to add to this is that as we continue to develop these plans with input from our teachers and students and parents and families and staff and Commissioners, as we're developing and evolving in these plans, you know, we hope that, to determine how many teachers and how many families would want to return based on these options that have been provided or future options that we provide along the way. So our human capital department will be sending out requests from the staff to be able to determine whether staff are comfortable returning, why or why not? And we already know that we will make accommodations for staff members who perhaps have a pre-existing condition, and coming back at this time may not be feasible so that we can determine what our staffing needs are going to be as we open schools in the fall. And likewise, we plan on offering the same kind of questionnaire to our parents and families to determine their comfort level in sending their students back to school, as well as how many are going to be in favor of sending their students to a virtual K-12 academy, especially in the fall. Now, this, beginnings of this draft, which I've shared with you, will probably have many iterations before any decisions are ever made, will be made in collaboration with all of the stakeholders that I've mentioned before. I'd like the board to see the reopening committees that were already started before the state released the Adapt, Advance, Achieve document last week. The Waterbury Public Schools reopen committee members are listed here. These committees were working even before we received this guidance. So there was a long-term recovery committee, which met regularly for several weeks, and there was a teaching and learning committee, which was meeting as well to address some of the specifics of the academic side. There was also a committee addressing health and safety, and another committee addressing technology. Additionally, we had a side-by-side committee with the mayor. His committee is the government committee, government side, and ours was the long-term recovery committee on the Board of Ed side, and the members that you see here were members that served on the overall, both committees. So we've done a lot of collaboration with other agencies, with the Health Department, with the hospitals, with our emergency with the health department, with the hospitals, uh, with our emergency crisis team, uh, with the city health department. All of the various stakeholders that really informed some of our decisions and will continue to do so. However, the plan ends up in the next several weeks. Importantly, there are some meetings that have already been scheduled to engage in dialogue with various stakeholders. In July fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth, there are going to be town hall meetings. We, we will be advertising those town hall meetings. We anticipate people, uh, helping us spread the word so that after this, these drafts are released, parents can have, uh, conversations with us about what's important, what we need to reconsider, what we need to add, what we need to delete, so that our plan can continue to be refined to best meet the needs of our students and our families and our teachers and staff here in Waterbury. And these are just a few of the meetings that are coming up in July. Additionally, uh, there are some other groups that will be invited by invitation alone. And, and I suspect that they're going to be larger groups, but by invitation alone, because we want to make certain that we hear various voices throughout this, um, these plans. So one of the first groups, uh, meeting on July eighth, it will be members of the long-term recovery, uh, we're, we're calling it the long-term recovery forum, but it will include members of the subcommittee. So everybody whose names that you saw in these various subcommittees, as well as members who served on the subcommittees for the strategic plan and a number of volunteers, because we've had a number of people call in or email asking how they could help, we're going to invite all of them to the July eighth forum. On July ninth, we're going to invite members of DPAC, the Parent Liaison and the Parent Advisory. Links to volunteering or, or asking to, or wanting to serve and to give feedback. That has already been released, it's on our website. And, uh, we've already started to receive interest in the parent advisory. It's any parent or family member in Waterbury who's interested in having some input and letting us hear what, what their concerns are and how they believe that we could move forward in addressing the needs of students in the fall. We want them to participate by invitation to the, uh, July ninth. And the only thing they have to do is to just click on the link that's provided on our website. And any of the commissioners as well as, we've sent this information to others as well. All they have to do is click on that, fill out their name. We will be certain that they are connected to that community forum on July ninth. And on July tenth, we're doing the very same thing for students and student advisor. Student in Waterbury just has to click on the form, um, fill out very, uh, their name, the school, an email address that, that is current with a phone number. We're going to send out the email, uh, information. So we asking everybody who wants to participate, and our students in particular, to check their emails frequently. So that once they have said that they are interested, they're going to get, um, a response. And they're also going to get, uh, uh, the necessary information to be included in this July tenth meeting. Uh, I tried to be a little bit flexible with some of these times and, and quite a bit more flexible with the July fourteenth and fifteenth and sixteenth times to allow for, uh, many stakeholders to be able to, uh, tune in and to be able to offer some, some, uh, direction for us as we collectively work to reopen schools for 2020, 2021. And I will stop there. If you have any questions, I will answer them. Just please know that this is not final. I am positive that we're going to get some other communication from the state. We have several meetings that are scheduled next week. And, and I am certain that as this progresses, we will be getting other, other input from other agencies as well. And what we want to do is have a, a plan or, uh, that we can submit to the state by July twenty-fourth. That's the deadline that was given to us, not for approval, but rather for, uh, just submission to the State Department so that, um, they can look at all of the plans across Connecticut and we can share those practices. That concludes what I have to say here. I want you to have questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. Anyone wish a comment or a question? Hello? Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
Hi, Doctor. Thank you for that information. Really appreciate it. Of course, the first priority is the health and safety of the students. And I know you mentioned, I know it's early in stages, but the cleaning, uh, uh, protocols and the sanitation of, of the schools. Do you plan, and I don't know if this might be a Will Clark question. Do you plan on doing it with the, with the custodial staff that you have now? Increasing custodial staff and getting an outside service to do it? Because I think that's very, very important that the, uh, the students, when, if they come back, have, have a good, clean environment.
I'm going to let Will add on to that, but we, uh, we would expect to utilize our own staff. And we would also expect that, uh, we have some vacancies within our, our maintenance crew. We would expect to fill those positions, um, so that we are better equipped with our own staff to be able to handle this. But I'll let Will elaborate if he has additional information to add.
No, that's, that's right on, um, exactly the plan. We are working with, um, you know, the, the state guidance. Um, and we've been, um, engaged in all of our, essentially our summer cleaning while we've been shut down. So we've been a little bit ahead of the curve here. So now we're, we're working on setting up, uh, the, the rooms as best we can and, and the distance and so forth. Trying to stock up on supplies. So we're ahead of the game because obviously with the increased hand washing, increased cleaning, we're going to need more supplies. So if we take advantage of the CARES Act funds that are available now and, and some of the state funds that are available, we'll get it ahead of the curve with respect to some of those pieces. We have a little bit of a trial run with the camps going on, uh, and engaged in some of the cleaning efforts that are going on there. And that, that many of the rules that the state put out, um, in this document, uh, last week are very similar to what they had put out previously for the camps. So we have a little bit of a, a dry run, but yes, we want to fill those, uh, positions, have some extra firepower. When needed, uh, we have also, you know, had some flexibility to bring in outside support. That happened during a couple of instances with, um, early on in, in the COVID scenario. So we certainly, you know, we made open, uh, to any and all solutions. But you, you know, feel confident that our staff's been doing a good job, uh, and getting them the right equipment and the right supplies in their hands, uh, and then continuing that with, uh, perhaps some additional staff that we could put in.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Will. Next question, Commissioner Harvey. Hello, Commissioner Harvey. We can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Okay, you hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Ruffin, would you consider adding one additional form? You got two in the morning and one in the evening. Would you consider that or?
Absolutely. I, I plan on adding more. There's another one with, um, actually it's a, it's a group of young people that I'm so excited about getting to meet with. And there were some of the, um, the, um, youth that spoke, former graduates, that spoke at one of the board meetings, I plan on including them. And we're going to be talking, um, about the, um, uh, safety and safety protocols. SRO was important with school climate. And so that's one that's not been scheduled here because it's one that hasn't been placed on my calendar yet. I'm waiting to hear on when they're available is when I'm available. But I can add, I can definitely add more. I just wanted to make certain I added these so people could start planning. And make sure that they can get to that, but I will be more than happy to add more.
When, when, uh, when you add, what I'm looking at is in the evening, it might be easier, a little easier for the parents. So, because you have two mornings and then one evening. So, you know, that, that's my motivation on that, to make sure that the parents have a, a crack at this. Okay. And then now the second is just statement. And I was, um, kind of piggybacking off of, uh, Rock and his statements. So, you know, I'm not sure if, uh, you know, who's going to answer this. But I think it's very important that, and, and this is not coming from me. This is coming from, uh, folks that I've spoken with, teachers, parents alike, that the, their concern is with the scheduling of cleaning up the, uh, the schools. They had concern in some schools pre-virus, you know, as far as the schools being cleaned. And now it's amplified because, uh, it looks like there needs to be a schedule of, of cleaning. One, one parent or, excuse me, one teacher may have come that her classroom was cleaned once a year. Or the, the floor was, um, and that she had to, uh, clean floor. So, you know, I would hope that we would, I heard that you're going to fill whatever is vacant. That's good, but, um, really think in order to get the confidence of, of staff and our parent, we're going to really have to beef up this clean, uh, process. So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that. Would we anticipate as far as the, our maintenance crew, uh, having more, not only filling those positions, but having more, uh, uh, position? So two questions. One is with the cleaning scale and two is with, would we kind of look at, you know, fill more of our maintenance, adding additional maintenance?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'd like to answer that because, um, there, there have been, um, the, the answer is we're going to do the very best thing that's, that's conducive to our district. We're, we're open. That's why we're asking, um, you know, for input. But here's why I hesitate to just say blanketly that I'm adding here and I'm adding here and adding here. Because I remember, um, to the commissioners, it was very important that we're able to sustain what we add. Uh, and so I want to have a, a very well-thought-out plan before I say yes to a whole lot of things that, that later on we have to lay off people and I do not want to do that. I, I didn't do, I planned on doing that. So I have to make certain that there's a need and, and that there's affordability and that's consistency, because at the same time, I'm also hearing, uh, myself from teachers and students and parents about the need to increase the way we address social and emotional, you know, this, the, the, the social and emotional needs of our students. So I, I, I don't want to say yes to that and, and not give you a very full, fair, thorough, and accurate display of what we can and cannot do.
Okay. I have one more question. Dr. Ruffin, um, one of the things, I was really kind of surprised that that was meant to me was, uh, the fact that, I don't know if it's all, hopefully it's not all schools, but the, uh, monitoring of soap, making sure that the bathrooms, that there's soap, paper towels, um, et cetera, because we want, you know, one of the ways you fight this virus is by washing your hands and social distancing, et cetera. But it's very surprising to find out that, you know, our restrooms are not monitored. So, uh, you know, keeping, make sure there's soap in there, make sure there's paper towels, make sure that we have gel, you know, the sanitation or sanitizer, gel, et cetera. But that part was a concern pre-virus. So, uh, um, I only hope that, and, and again, I understand this is in the beginning. This is very, um, you know, uh, it's in that form. But these are just the mentioning that we really, uh, should look at, particularly when we come to, or just considering what we're going to do. Any comments on that, Dr. Ruffin?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So I, I mentioned this because, um, I want to make sure the parents know that I did mention it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Commissioner Jason Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Uh, Doc, just a couple of things. And, and I know a lot of the answers and questions we're asking tonight might be moved next week because everything may change. But, um, just going off some of the stuff we just saw, under the Plan A or the kind of the, the game plan where maybe we'll have, um, a fair number of students in the school, other kids virtually. The people who are present physically are going to be needing masks. Is it, is there a mandate that we're providing all these masks?
At this time, there's not so much a mandate, but we've included it in our planning and will probably come out with several, um, options, number, you know, se- several of them simultaneously. For instance, we're certainly going to make some available, but we all, for student and staff. But, you know, some people may choose to bring their own. You know, uh, some parents may choose to, to always have their, their mask. And some parents may choose to have their students come to school with the little bottle of the, uh, uh, of the, uh, hand wash. We, we, but we're going to make it available. And what we have done is we've, uh, for instance, at superintendent's level, that's one of the areas of concern that we have because potentially that could cost several millions of dollars to be able to provide it for everyone every day if everybody returns. We're asking for some support and when people are saying, well, how can we help you? Uh, I'm making very certain that I articulate that in such a manner that people know that this is an added expense. And so if, if this is a requirement, which we believe that it is for safety, then we need some assistance with that. We can't just find another several million dollars on top of everything else that we're out, you know, we are, we know we're going to be needing. So I hope I answered that question. Yes, we're going to, we're going to need to add that as part of the plan. But we're hoping that we can mitigate that by either someone bringing their own and wanting to bring their own. And then, you know, on the creative side, you know, we could have some service projects where we ask students and, and families and, and do a project and, and they, you know, design their own mask. But we haven't gotten to that part yet.
No, that's exactly what I was wondering because, you know, if we pretend that the bulk of the students are coming back and we have to be providing, you know, masks almost on a daily basis, we're talking somewhere between seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand masks each week. So that number will get, um, exorbitant quickly. Second, um, and the idea of this, what I'm going to call a hybrid system where we have some of the kids on campus, some kids doing the virtual academies, which I, I think is a likelihood. If, I guess, how, what will the protocols be? And if you don't have the answer yet, that's okay. For deciding, um, you know, for the nineteen thousand kids and the fifteen hundred teachers, if, if a majority of them want to say all go virtual, how do we kind of get to a, you know, fifty-fifty balance, for lack of a better term? If, you know, if, if half of the, if half of the students want to come back in person, but seventy-five percent of the teachers aren't comfortable coming back, how do we solve that equation?
Absolutely. And I absolutely do not know. But what we're going to be doing is we're going to be, um, asking the question, uh, you know, this month. You know, HR is going to capture some, some preliminary data from the teachers and the support staff. And so we'll kind of know where people are thinking at this point in July. And then we're going to do the same thing through the, the surveys that we're going to be sending out for parents and, um, uh, to determine, uh, our best estimate at this top point in time. And then we're going to see how we might need to start scheduling it or balancing it in terms of the number of teachers to deliver virtual, the number of teachers to deliver in person. And then we're going to go from there. So I would imagine that our work in the next, not so much next week, but after we finish with, uh, the, um, the, the forums, we're going to have some, another, another really, um, aggressive and, and, and strenuous task to be able to determine. So, so now what are we going to do based on the numbers of people that say they're coming back? And the people, number of people that aren't sure and, uh, and the number of people that, 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 that said, no, uh, that's not going to work for me.
Okay. And I think that's a fair answer. And I, I was happy to hear that, that you're reporting that a number of the teachers have kind of taken it on their own to kind of bone up on the distance learning and going, getting Google certified, to kind of, you know, put themselves in a good position. So kudos to all those teachers who have kind of taken it on their own to, to extend their own, um, their learning on their own time. So that's great to hear.
I'm proud of them. It, it, that's hard work too.
Certainly. Um, for the half-day model, other than maybe- other than maybe having more time for cleaning after hours, what, what's kind of the upside of that? I'm having trouble wrapping my head around that version of it.
Well, again, none of these plans are like crystal perfect, perfect. But the, the concept behind the half-day is maybe more people may decide to send their children back to school part of the time as opposed to all day long wearing, for instance, you know, just being very candid here, all day long wearing a mask versus half-day wearing a mask and knowing that you might be able to tolerate it for a half-day, but maybe not, a full day might not be. That, that could be one consideration for a half-day model. The, the other one is if, if there's two opportunities, maybe there's going to be more of a balance to be able to do some additional spacing on your school, at your school level. Maybe. We, we're not sure until people start to declare which one is, is going to, to be more conducive for, for them in, in an August opening. So it's, it's really setting the stage to try to find out information that we could make a plan more, more specific to Waterbury.
And, and I think there's a good point that, that I hadn't thought about. I, I don't envy the, the kindergarten or first grade teacher has to try to keep their entire classroom wearing masks all day. It, it, you know, quite frankly, it's going to be an impossibility. So I, so having not thought of maybe a half-day would be easier for especially some of the younger students, that, that might be a plus. And you touched on it briefly, talking about logistics and opportunities. But if we did say the half-day model, what does that do for fall sports?
Well, we don't know what that does for fall sports because we continue to get information about, about sports. And, you know, right now, you know, we, we, when, when we look at sports on, on the, on a national level, you know, it, it's, it's, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I, you know, I can't imagine people are stressing out and not knowing whether or not they're going to be able to watch their favorite team play in the fall, but that, that, that might not happen. So for us, it's still a matter of being in communication with the athletics organization and also how they're providing limited, limited sport activities based on, you know, this virus. And, and it might be a little bit of training, but, but the actual sports, we're not really capable of doing that. So what that does for, for our, today, what that does for our fall, fall sports is we're just staying in tune to all of that to determine what are some of the things that we could feasibly do to allow our students some physical activity, but they can't play right now.
Jumping off on one of the things Vice President Harvey said, and it might be something to look at as far as maintainers or extra cleaning staff. It's not unheard of in the city to hire seasonal staff where it's not, you're not committing to a full-time forever job. But this is something that will last for a finite amount of time. You can earn a nice salary, do the work, but when kind of the need is no longer there, it's no longer there. So that might be an opportunity to maybe bring on some people, but, you know, not necessarily have to commit the next twenty-five years to them. And, and my last question, and don't mistake this for me volunteering, I noticed on none of the committees, there was any Board of Education representation. On the city side, I noticed at least the Board of Alderman President was included. Does not like us or what was, what was the story there?
No, it's not that I don't like you. And you're, all of these committees that you're looking at, all, all ten commissioners, if you're looking at these committees and there's a committee that you would like to serve on, I have no problems with that whatsoever. I thought the, the charge was to go and to, you know, get some of this work done, come back and make certain that it was to your liking. But it wasn't to exclude you in no ways. So if you'd like another meeting, just join, join, join the ship.
I, I volunteer Charlie Stango to all of the committees. Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you. Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know you've, you've answered some of the questions about the maintainers, but what kind of supplies are they using to clean the schools? Are they still using the green supplies that was mandated before through the state? Or are they using something more like Lysol or Clorox?
I'm, I'm going to let Will finish the answer, but somewhere before, oh, I don't know, in March or April, the, the, the standards changed. And so it went from you have to use only the green to wait, no, you can use other supplies as well, you know, for deeper cleaning. And we started doing that as well and we continue to do that. But Will could answer more specifically if, if you'd like to elaborate, Will.
Yeah, just quickly, that, that's exactly right. You know, we do still primarily use the green cleaning products. You know, they, they do the job that they're supposed to do. Obviously, there is the overriding concern of the reason we have the green cleaning products to avoid folks who have allergies to bleach and other things. So, you know, you have to have that balance. But the state, as Dr. Ruffin indicated, did relax the green cleaning requirements. So we are able to purchase and utilize some other equipment. Public Works, for example, doesn't have those same requirements. So there's already a supply chain that we can tap into. So we've been able to strategically adjust, but like everything else, this is a moving target. When the COVID first hit, you know, everyone wanted to buy foggers and defoggers. And then it came out that, well, that moves air around and could be moving the particles of harmful COVID around. So everyone stopped using the foggers. So, you know, bleach today in one presidential briefing and not so much tomorrow. So, you know, we still are based in the green cleaning. That's what we're set up for. That's what our supply chain is. But we do supplement that as needed and essentially it's all products and supplies on, on deck to, to do what needs to be done.
I do have another question. And, and actually, I know Jason mentioned the, the mask. And I reached out to the superintendent because obviously some of the special needs kids might not even be able to wear the mask. So that'll be something interesting to see how that can be worked out. But Dr. Dr. Ruffin, my question is, I didn't see Adela Jorge on the advisory. So how are the ESL students or families going to be included in the planning?
Absolutely. The students are included in the planning. The, the teaching and learning address all facets of teaching and learning, including our bilingual. And while she may not be listed personally on any one of the committees, she's been an integral part of all of the work that we have done this summer.
Thank you.
Liz?
Good evening. Wow. Lots of work, lots of committees. I just had one question in terms of, you know, thinking about how we are going to reach the families, especially the, the students, we're calling them the disconnected students, the students who kind of, you know, just didn't participate at all since March. I think, I think the figure was twenty-five percent at one time. So I'm wondering, is there a plan in place for more outreach and for really knocking on doors and, and getting, getting to, getting to these kids and families? Because I, I think this is going to be critical to the plan for opening up the schools to make sure that everybody's being reconnected, if you will. Or maybe that's happening through the summer school program.
We've had, we've never stopped and we've used all of the, no, no, we really haven't. And, you know, and, and I've had principals go and knock on doors and, 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 and I've had principals sitting in their car while they call the, the parent or the child to let them know they were out there waiting either with a Chromebook or with the, and, and that we never stopped and we're not going to. But I think a critical part is to have, you know, maybe a wider network so that we could make certain that if someone doesn't get the information, maybe somebody who has the information knows where to find other people so that they can engage that person into either responding or participating. I can just tell you that the Welcome Center has done an outstanding job with the students and the parents that have registered so far. And, and, and so, and we have the, in the plan, in the plan that even the one that I presented today, that the whole team worked very hard on, that plan calls for making certain that we have accurate contact information for everyone. Now, I think that a lesson learned for all of us is that oftentimes we get contact information when students register. And then we may not really follow up and follow through on frequent checks because people do move. And I think we need to do a better job of making certain that we have checks within the school. You know, it, it can't be done at the district level. It has to be done at the point of contact that's closest to the children and the families. And so we, you know, that point of contact, it's the teacher, the, the, the number of support staff that all of the schools have to be able to reach out and make certain that we have accurate information for everyone. But we've got to do it more than when we have a crisis.
Thank you.
And, and I, and I imagine that when the committee meets with the parent liaisons and so forth, that this issue will be, you know, drilled down and hopefully, you know, really be marketable. The other question I had was in terms of just the schedule for opening, is it going to be, you know, how, how are we going to get trans, how are we going to transition kids back to school? Given, given the whole world that we're living in now, is, is there going to be a different approach in the first week of school?
Commissioner, right now, I can't even tell you what's going to happen tomorrow. All I can tell you is we will figure it out together.
Yeah, that's, that's a very early question, but I think we're going to be visiting that question more so in next meeting and the next meeting.
Okay. All right. I just, you know, it just, I think it's important and, and all of these things because the logistics are one thing, but then it's, it's the, it's the human capital. And you've done an outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Guys, I don't see anybody else's hands. So the next item is item fourteen, which is delineated the superintendent's notifications to the board on the agenda. We can all read that in our off time. And now we are at the point of, we're going to be done here in a minute. Commissioner Sweeney, can I have a motion to move to executive session?
Motion to adjourn and to executive session, session for the purpose of the evaluation of the superintendent.
Second discussion. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Guys, thank you very much. Will will switch us over accordingly so that we're only in executive session. Thank you, guys.